Okay, I'm actually going to call the meeting to order because we have a lot to do and I think we should already have enough time. So, I would like to call the Planted Wood Meeting for March 10th, 2020 to order. First on the agenda, we do have the continued public hearing, however, just while everyone's getting settled, I just quickly want to review the school street site plan approval decision. Did everybody have a chance to look at that? Did Kathy have some thoughts?
Yep.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? Or did this accurately depict what we expected?
Yeah, I think I said more than two, but we fixed it, so.
So, okay, so there were a couple amendments?
Yep.
Okay. So, in that case, I'm going to send this around for everyone to quickly sign so they can take care of this and is that all still?
Carrie, I also have an A and R. Did you want to sign that?
Sure.
Well, okay. It's actually for this Whitney Street property. But again, it just requires one of you. And it's just them, it's the company reestablishing their lot lines.
Okay.
So, it's just an A and R. So, it's the four, you know, 425 West, I mean, excuse me, Whitney.
425 Whitney.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it'd be.
It's an A and R for 425?
Yeah.
Isn't that for Starisite?
Yeah.
It's changing?
No, they're just reestablishing their lot lines as the, as the new owner.
We don't really consider them.
I just saw them off the 425.
So, did anything change?
Nope. Nope, when I went through, you know, we have an in-house, we have an in-house review process that we do with every A and R.
Yeah.
For this one, well, period.
And the old A and R wasn't up to date?
Um, oh, I, I couldn't tell you when the last was an A and R. And then the.
So, is it the same score footage, everything that's on the G I S map?
Yeah, that's the existing building that's there.
Yep. Just want to get the G I S map and say it was the same.
Yep, the three staff members looked at it, but.
Oh, okay.
If you want to look at it again, you certainly can.
I just, we've never had an A and R redone.
We have.
Oh, yeah, you have.
Yeah.
For a site?
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes what they'll do is they'll do like the lines and it doesn't work out and then redo the lines again, as long as it needs the setbacks and stuff. I think we've done them.
Yeah, you've done when, when a company, sometimes, not everybody does it, but when they, you know, buy a property.
They have a read, um.
Survey.
Survey, yeah.
We've done them more for residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, like I said, that just, you know, like with any A and R, I dumped it all on you, Carrie, but it just needs one signature.
Do you hear? Ah, I didn't hear.
Oh, okay.
So, you just need to date it too, Carrie, today's date.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to roll or hold?
Let's probably roll. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. So, next on the agenda is the continued public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site sign approval, and special permit for groundwater protection in the Holy Lake District. It is just after six o'clock, so why don't we get started? Where we last left off, we were looking at the R F P documents that Kathy had given to everybody to review. Tonight, we've invited Scott, who wants to help guide us a little bit. Kathy, I don't know if you want to sit down in the contact and cover what's going to do or.
Sure. I had originally prepared, you know, just, you know, using other examples, a request for proposal and, which I had originally, or I gave to the board a couple of meetings ago. And then when I talked with Scott, Scott does a lot of our 30 B procurement for the town, so when I asked Scott to take a look at it, Scott first started off explaining to me that it's really a request for qualifications that we would be doing. And so, Scott graciously agreed to take a look at the, what I had written, and then he switched it over, added to it, revised it, made it into the R F Q. And then I asked Scott, given that he's very, again, he does most of them for the town, so I asked Scott if he could come to the meeting and talk to you about A, why the difference, and then, you know, why it's written the way that it's written.
Okay, great. Do you want to add something?
Sure, thank you. So, I've been on both sides of the fence. I was a consultant for nearly 20 years doing, among many things, peer reviews. I've seen a lot of R F Ps and RFPs come out. You know, when I took a look at the scope in the R F P that was prepared in draft form, it was complete, it was concise, it was, it's very difficult to, to provide a price proposal on unknowns. Unknowns including the number of meetings, the number of submissions, the requirement for expert testimony potentially, if there was an appeal, all of those scope items are warranted in a peer review service for planning zoning conservation, they're very hard to price. And you either price it too low and end up with a scope fight back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, or they price it really high and they get thrown out. And that's not in, in the interest of an applicant or is in the interest of the Planted Board. I talked to Kathy about what would provide the board with the services they desire, which is experts in the fields as outlined, and what would provide the applicant what they require, which is, you know, tiny reviews, which would not be the case if you're fighting back and forth with your consultant on scope and fee. So, an R F Q is a logical process to go through. You can select based on qualifications. Be aware, you know, in accordance with chapter 30B, architectural engineering services are exempt from procurement. So, it's not a requirement. I do a lot of 30B procurement in the Public Works Department. It's what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of town. We get quality-based contractors and consultants for fair prices. The 30B process does not preclude you from, as lots, or many other towns do, is they'll select a couple peer reviewers. If a Planted Wood was looking for peer review services for an annual basis, they would select two, sometimes three, maybe varying expertise in firms or varying sizes. And when a large application comes in, they can even get multiple quotes for it because they're already in a contract. That's not really the case here. You're looking for a single application review. So, that was how I geared the R F Q right up. I left in a lot of the stuff that you apparently wanted from the last meeting I was at, which was the opportunity to interview a selected firm. They provide their qualifications, you review the qualifications, you shortlist it, you can invite them in to talk, or you can just pick whom you want. At that point, you can, you engage in, in a price negotiation based on the scope. One of the requirements for their submission is a fee table. You'll find that most similarly sized firms have similar fee tables. If they're way out of whack, they're not going to be doing a lot of work. So, you're generally going to see very similar tables. I think the focus is on, on obviously expertise first, response in the second, and then there's the chemistry component that they seem to be somebody that you want to work with. So, that's in a nutshell.
So, does anyone on the board have any questions about Scott's, what you're thinking here? So, you added a different criteria for selection. You had quite good action, okay.
Well, I, the original one, I had left out all of the, I mean, it's very typical with the, it is very standard, actually, what the, how you, how you rate the proposals and, you know, whether something is advantageous, you know, there's, there's levels that, that, you know, is generally accepted when you do, you know, requests for consultants. That's a case.
Okay. Any questions from the board on the revised R F Q?
I just have one thing, and it's not major at all, it's a number word. Smithing, under G, additional information. I noticed proponents was used a lot, but you had deleted all the proponents and called it like the selected candidate. So, in G at the bottom, proponents, that one was still proponents, like should that be?
Yeah, that should be updated.
Yeah, that was, it's just the word, right.
So, obviously, without, you know, knowing, I mean, I think the purpose of tonight is for you to, you know, get those questions solidified, but I didn't put any dates in here. I might have put March 10th on the, the date of release with March 10th, but, but other than that, you know, I'll just work backwards. And there's the standard, you know, amount of days, and I'll get that information from Scott, but as far as, you know, when we release it and how long someone has to respond to it.
Okay. Any questions over here?
Nope.
Is this something that, that they were involved in picking the peer review candidates as well, or is it just us?
No, they, they can challenge who you choose by law and by your, by law, and they would challenge it through the board of selection.
Okay.
It's ultimately the town's industry that designs this.
Sure.
Not myself or the Planted Wood.
The intent of the evaluation criteria, highly advantageous, somewhat advantageous, not advantageous, or acceptable, and articles A through E is so that the selection process has some meat to it. It's not just arbitrary. There is a matrix and you pick each firm and you identify where they are, and it provides a good paper trail in a, for the selection process.
Okay. I actually have a couple of questions. Is that all? Do you have any other questions?
Sid from.
Nope.
I just have a couple of questions. One is, I don't know if it's in here or not, do we need to put anything? Do we want the right to reject subcontractors, anything like that, or is that?
I don't, I don't think you need to. I mean, you don't know what expertise they're going to need until you get there. I mean, you know, they're likely to have a subcontractor for the specific.
All the shield.
Yeah, the shielding component, there's not a civil engineering peer reviewer firm that's likely to have that, it's understaffed.
Okay.
And I don't, you, I don't see any reason to challenge a subcontractor.
Okay.
Really? Unless you want to engage them separately and serve as a general on it, and maybe notice some.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make this a normal process. I just wanted to make sure that you were covered for that. And then the other thing, so the point of contact I see is Kathy. So, does that include whatever the, any engagement itself is, is through Kathy, not through the applicant?
Correct.
Like can the applicant schedule meetings, or do we need to define the, who has access?
Everything goes through the.
Everything.
Yeah, the applicant is in, I mean, we'll notify the applicant of who we chose, and they have to, you know, supply us the funding for it, which is put into an account, and, but it's all done through the town, you know, the hiring, the review of their work. Like Scott said, we don't know how many meetings they'll be attending, so that's not in there specifically, but.
The only time I see an applicant communicate directly with a peer reviewer is when you're in the construction phase of it and there needs to be notification, and it's timing related. You need to do subgrade inspections for roadway, station five to station 12, and they call and request, or they email and request the inspection. It allows that inspection to be a little more timely. We're always kept in the loop on the communication line, but it's not necessarily they call her, she calls them, and the inspection needs to get out there and do it.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this is new or not, the term is three hundred sixty-five days, is that pretty standard?
One-year contract, yeah, from execution.
Okay, great.
You're allowed to renew it for one, two additional one-year terms.
Okay, got it. And then, one thing I saw that you made, you brought in some of the feedback from the last time. The one thing that I had mentioned last time that I would like to be included in the initial meeting or phone conference, in the step, just so I can sort of set in my mind what happened, and so I can.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to put that in here, Carrie.
Oh, you don't? Okay, just give me.
Yeah.
Well, so regarding the selection process or regarding the actual?
No, just this, just the scope of work. I'm on page four, five. Page five, just the scope of work. It's just the initial meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
Okay. Did the applicant have a chance to see this as well, this draft?
Yes, I did send it to the attorney, that he happens to be on vacation or?
Yes, Brian Falkmar at Alcomel here on behalf of Staris. I'm pinshitting for Steve McDowell, who's on vacation. Kathy, I don't know if you have the most up-to-date version from Scott's changes. I don't know.
Um, you should.
Okay.
Because I sent it to.
It'll say R F Q. It'll say R F Q.
I think I had sent it out to Steve when I had sent it out to the board.
Okay, yeah, it may be. Our only, if I may, our only question was whether the scope of work had changed from the version that we saw to this. The scope I have, you know, starts with requesting responses, peer review home services, this is the Planted Wood in view of the applicant specs, and then goes on with the November 15th letter, and then our response in January 28th. I'm assuming that that scope is going to include the most recent March 10th request of questions as maybe modified tonight in our verbal response?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
Because they actually, Brian, if that's, if I didn't send you that version, I apologize, but in the paper copy I just handed you, I'll send you this draft tonight, but throughout the document, I think it's only in two places, but I added in the Planted Wood Letter dated March 10th, and the response from Staris dated, you know, whatever it is, we'll insert that.
Okay, I see that. So, what you just gave me is the updated version?
Yeah, that's the version that they have.
Right. Our only, I mean, obviously, our, our hope is that the scope is, is here, and it doesn't become sort of a, you know, revolving door of questions with the peer reviewer, that it's a, you know, we've answered the questions, they're reviewing that, that exchange, and that, you know, any new and additional questions that may come up, if there are, are going to be, you know, at a later date, that it's not going to be sort of a rolling question and answer period.
No, that's fair. I think the reason we went through this exercise, from my perspective, is so that we can get that last component together, so it doesn't have to be a roll, and this is the consolidation of all of the last couple of hearings and things of feedback that we received, so this should be, unless anybody would comment differently or feel differently, that it's.
Yeah. And Scott, I know with an R F P, I had talked about this, actually, Fred and I had talked about this a little bit at the last Planted Wood meeting, so I don't know if it's the same with an R F Q, that if something had to be clarified, or if there was a question that the board, you know, forgot, or, or, you know, came up, if, how would we go about?
You should add them the same way.
Okay.
Yep. And then, because it's common, the respondent, the prospective respondent will probably have questions. One of them will probably say, do you really need eight hard copies? That's a common one. Can I just give you a thumb drive and you email it out?
Okay.
Expect that one.
And one of the questions we had was anything that the consultant might find that we didn't even think to answer, and we didn't think to ask that, so that might come back to us with, you might come back with information?
No, you said that wouldn't happen.
No, they, right, they only, they, a peer review is they review what you give them.
I think that one of our questions in the original memo was, is there anything that we may have missed that we should know about? Because we're not experts in that field.
Was there related conditions? Were there any conditions that we may have?
It's in our original memo, so it is a question going to the consultant. It didn't go to Staris, but they did see it. So, I can find it.
Are you, are you in Staris's responding?
I am.
Yep.
And then we have a section that was questions just for the peer review application.
I think it was any other information that the peer reviewer determines if permanent facility process for groundwater construction?
Yeah, which is number six on page three.
I.
So, it's kind of asking him.
It might be on a different page, because that, because number six on page three for me is the estimated number of employees for the project.
Oh, no, I have the original one. Exhibit A, page three, exhibit A in the book.
Oh, exhibit A.
Yeah.
No, no, but I, but I found it. Okay, so the, actually, Scott, is, this is a memo that the Planted Wood wrote, and that's, this was a set of questions that they sent to Staris?
Any other information the peer reviewer determines if permanent facility process to add to construction? That's not an uncommon question for a Planted Wood to pose to a peer reviewer.
Okay.
It isn't, there may be other laws and jurisdictions that they're not, that I was not aware of, and that, you know, one of the conditions of approval could be obtain permits as required by D E P through regulations such and such. That's, I think I encountered those conditions before.
And because like this whole memo is included part of the peer review, I would think they would get this section, peer review of application, and go down all those parts.
Yeah, they get, they're, everything that you have, well, everything that's listed in the R F Q is what the peer reviewer would get.
Okay.
So, basically, with, it's the application, it's the site plans, well, it's the entire file, but it's basically the application, site plans, and then your letter, Staris's response, your second letter, that I'm, you know, assuming we'll discuss tonight, and then Staris's response to that.
Okay. So, the most important thing to me is, you know, the safety, and that might not be in here in a specific question, but it might be something they find, but they'll add it to the report. Anything we may have missed.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you?
No, as I mentioned, you know, we're hoping for a, you know, clearly defined scope, so that it's, you know, it's a peer review and sort of a rolling Q and A.
Yep.
I think it's, that they set up that way. We had some concerns that there, there's some language a few times in there about, you know, additional consulting services, so that just gave us some, some pause, this is, this may be a little bit more open-ended than we were thinking.
Okay. Anything specific you can recall in there?
So, at the end, I'm hoping it's the same version, so at the end of the scope, after number six, you know, obtain the right to solicit additional consulting services beyond the scope of the subject matter of this R F Q. That's, there's two or three other places in, and I know that's, they may just be oil plate language for the, for the town, and if so, it's fine, but we just, you know, we were concerned, you know, is this the scope, or is there going to be more coming?
Scott, you have anything?
Yeah, to the chair. That's oil plate language. In the event an applicant comes in and has some specific light analysis and lighting engineer is required, as opposed to a standard, you know, foot candle analysis that a civil engineer can do, it's, it's a that, or a noise consultant or something to that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else that you want to add?
No.
Anything else from staff? Okay, in terms of addressing the memo from March 10th, Kathy, what is the desire that comes of our review of this memo? Is it finalizing these questions, or do we need to go through them?
Well, what I gave was, was two, you have two things in front of you, and, and one was sent out. The summary of all your questions, and by summary, it's, I didn't change your questions. I mean, I might have, just so that they all sort of flowed the same way, I mean, I changed some of the, but not the content, you know, it was maybe more like grammatical changes, but. And then I also gave you all tonight a copy of everyone's emails. So, you have exactly how everyone asked the question. And so, what you, you know, what you have tonight is, and I labeled it draft, but it's a collection of all of your questions that you raised at the last meeting, then you clarified them in an email, and, and then in the, I did it very similar to how we did the original memo with questions to Staris, is they're just, they're broken down into categories. The, there's a, you know, a couple pages of questions relating to the actual facility, and then there is a, two, about two and a half pages of questions for Town Council.
Okay. So, what do we need to accomplish the payment? Is it just a number of?
Well, I, so I'd like to take this, you know, I mean, if you're all okay with this, you know, to review this tonight, and, and, you know, state that you're, that you're okay with it, I'll send it to, you know, Staris tomorrow, and then they'll start on their response to this. And then, once we receive the response, then I can send out the request for qualifications for the peer review.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to review the consolidated list of questions?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any questions, or is there something missing, making adjustments? So, Jerry, did you and I have a copy of this yet, start or not?
Um, no, I don't believe that I, and I think we might have a couple.
Well, you can send tomorrow.
Yeah, but I mean, just for.
You did circulate a draft this weekend that came through.
Okay.
Oh, good, okay.
So, yeah, if this, yeah, that's the same.
Okay.
So, that's.
I did have one for question, Kathy, just on the power shutdown in the back of the generator. I just wanted to know what source of fuel they'll be using? Is it going to be directly connected to natural gas? I think there's natural gas on that street, isn't there?
Yeah.
On Whitney Street. So, I'm assuming that's what you would do if you had a generator connected through natural gas?
Uh, that's, yeah, it hasn't been, uh, normally would, but right now, we're just planning on having a backup generator.
Okay.
So, do you want to add that question, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if it was required, they're going to do it, how they're going to fuel it.
Okay.
It's pretty much limited to natural gas since they didn't declare any other toxic or hazardous materials, and the diesel fuel would have come under the groundwater's application.
Okay.
And we wouldn't want to do that anyway.
I had specified, there was one piece, so I didn't realize that there would just be consolidated as is, which is fine, but I did have some commentary in here that doesn't necessarily need to go along with it. For example, if I thought it was a question for Bob, or if I saw it as something that Michelle brought up at the last meeting, I think I just made a couple of comments, so that obviously doesn't have to travel with the document. And then the other thing that I.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I don't think I did that, Carrie. I mean, I think I took that out.
And the other thing was, what I thought sounded like the qualifications we'd want, so, you know, just the ability. want, so, you know, just the ability to read certain regulations that were referenced in the response, like the 105 CMR, 120.221, like things like that. I don't know if I needed to specify that, I assume.
You know, it, I don't think that you, I don't think that you do, but I think the place that we could add that, if you did want to include it, is on the, I think, RFQ, it's on the top of page five, where it's listed as peer engineering consultant to also review as applicable. I could add the CMR reference in there.
Yes, so it was basically any sort of regulations that were not mentioned in the response, regulations and terminology.
So we can add all three of those, I can add all three of those to the, to, into the RFQ.
So this is on page three for, for planning board members.
And I'll take it out of the, out of the planning board memo.
Okay. Any other comments? From the board? Any from staff? Any questions from the applicant?
We'll save our comments and our response to the question. My only question was, the list of questions at the end for Town Council, a couple of pages. I assume we're not being asked to address those items again, those are just real questions for Town Council?
Correct. Right, Kathy, you got what I'm asking?
Yes, we, because in the original memo, again, I just...
You put it in there.
...modelled after, yeah. So, so actually, what I, I can take those out also, and just submit that as a separate letter to Town Council.
Okay, perfect. This is the public hearing, or are there any comments from the public? Okay. Do you need a motion to approve this memo? Or is it just...
I technically know, but I mean, if you want to, for the record, I think that part will be helpful.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the memo regarding the request for additional 425 Woody Street site plan information dated March 10th, 2020? So... Second?
Second.
Motion's been made a seconded. Any further discussion? On the paperwork?
Okay, and then you would need, well, depending on where you are tonight, you would need to, you know, continue the public hearing. I have it. I don't know that it's necessary, and we can discuss this with the applicant, but your next meeting is a week from tonight. I don't, I don't want to say that, but I doubt there'll be a response. That's enough time. So I have it listed right now on the draft agenda for the 17th. But you could, you know, take it off the 17th and move it, actually, try best to ask the consultant when they think, I mean, the applicant, excuse me, when they think they would have a response. But your next meeting after the 17th would be April 7th, and then April 21st.
Do you have a question?
We were talking about it this afternoon. We think we should be able to get the response before the end of the month. I think that the 17th is probably, I mean, if we can even meet that, we wouldn't give you much time to be able to see it ahead of time. So I think aiming for the, for April 7th makes the most sense. Wouldn't get it to, you know, a week in advance, and...
Okay, and I don't think we have much left tonight. If anything, there'll be continued hearing for the bylaws.
Right, April 7th, you're, yeah, the only thing you have right now is, is the bylaws. I mean, you start that hearing on the 17th, but typically, you continue that through right before town meeting.
Okay, so...
And if there are any issues, at that, we can just contact you.
We can just send a letter to the community. So is there a motion to continue the hearing for 425 Woody Street to April 7th at 7:00 PM?
I make a motion to continue the meeting for 425 Woody Street to April 7th at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second? Is that... Okay, motion's been made a seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? The hearing is continued to April 7th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carrie, I don't know if anybody, I mean, I, you know, I thought we'd be right up against seven o'clock, but if anyone had a chance to look at the minutes from February 18th, I mean, maybe not. No, I know, it's only been a couple nights, so, between the last meeting, so, that's fine. That was the only other thing I was going to bring up, if we have time.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second? All in favor? Thank you.